Okay, well, it's nine o'clock, so we'll call this a regular meeting of the Commissioners' Court to order. It's on the 12th day of June at nine o'clock. For the invocation today, we've got Pastor Lewis has come to give us our invocation today. If y'all all rise.
Good morning. Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we come to you in the mighty name of Jesus today. Father God, we want to tell you thank you first of all, for this is the day that you have made, we will rejoice and we will be glad in it. Father God, we want to thank you for life and we want to thank you for liberty. We want to thank you for faith, family, and we want to thank you for freedom to worship. We thank you today because you are such a good God to us, Lord. We want to tell you thank you today for all those who protect and serve, Father God, this great country, from the national, Father God, to the civic, to the local. We want to tell you thank you today. We thank you, Father God, for the liberty that you have given us and the liberty as being your children in this world. Father, we ask you that you would bless our nation. We ask you to cause America to have a spiritual awakening. Through this time of distress, may America look up and call out to you, Lord. Raise up godly leadership in American government. For any and all strategies against America and Israel, cause our president and civic leaders to have a life-changing experience with you, Father Lord. Disrupt and dispense the liberal, immoral, anti-God agendas in American politics and around the world, and have those seek your glory. Raise up godly leadership in our country, in our city, in our community governments. Bring a great spiritual awakening to the church, to your church here in East Texas. Father God, we want to thank you once again, Father God, for all the things that you have done. Father God, how you are continuing to bring unity, Father God, and strength to this community. We give you praise and we give you glory, Father God, for your forgiveness, Lord. Father God, we thank you because, Lord, we have the opportunity to come before you boldly to the throne of grace, for we have all sinned and come short of your glory. So we thank you for your plan of salvation. We give you glory, honor, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, brother. Thanks, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number one on the agenda is the public comments and requests for information on non-agenda items in accordance with Section 551, Act 042, Texas Open Meetings Act. No speakers today. Number two, considering possibly approve the minutes from the May 22nd and 23rd special meeting of the Commissioners' Court.
Make that motion.
Got a motion by Commissioner Applewhite to approve that.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parch, uh, Parker. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, is it now? Number three, presentation by Mr. Mark Stansel concerning the county's nuisance policy. Mr. Stansel, would you like to...
How y'all doing? Hey, I appreciate y'all with this nuisance law. I have been bombarded for years, but if you notice the text that Mr. Matthews sent my wife, obviously, the investigator was out there prior to April 27th. And so if you go to the first set of pictures, that would be that property. And where my finger is, that is, that is the 300 foot off the two roads. This little area that the officer told him, the neighbor told me that the officer told him that's his state protection area. So he moved a set of cars down there, which you got, uh, the picture on the bottom where you can still see them from the road, the picture on the top where you can still see them from the road. So I don't know how, if you read your nuisance authority, when it says 300 foot of a public street for 10 days or more unless the rubbish or object is completely enclosed in a building or not visible to the public street. So how is that legal to be? Okay, go over to the next page. That is where the shop is. And we even have lawnmowers and... So three weeks ago, I asked you because I felt like at a certain time, you know, Mr. Mitchell told me one time after 30 days to get your notice, y'all move forward to the next step, and I haven't seen anything move. The only thing really moved is with the officer telling my neighbors who was complaining, that's moved.
But, Mr. Stansel, in my opinion, I've talked to Officer Bane, and he told me that there wasn't any violations at this time, but I will check back with him. Only problem that I have checking with him is if they do come before me, then they get into conflict of interest because I knew about it prior before them coming to court. But we will do some checking on that as well for you.
Okay, because what I'm reading and what's happening, y'all, it ain't working. And that's one property. Move over to the next one. With the buildings and the fire trucks, I mean, that's been sitting there for years. And then there's another one on County Road 4660, been sitting there for years. And ain't nothing moved.
Did you talk with Officer Bane on this?
Well, I did try to follow up with him, uh, maybe three weeks or so after, four weeks after it happened, I called to ask him how it was going, and Mr. Bane's telling me that I should just go over and buy them out.
Mr. Stansel, on this with the washing machine and the lawnmower and all, what County Road did you say that is?
No, that's off 49.
Off 49.
Yeah, his place runs on 49 and County Road, uh, on the 300 foot deal. But the washing machine is right there by my fence and them two old red cars. And everything behind that building was supposed to be because they worked on cars. But if you go and look, they don't even pay taxes. They've been in business six, seven years, and they, they're not even a business. Mr. Bane, if you look at the deal, he's out there talking to them like they're business. They don't even pay taxes. They ain't, they ain't doing nothing for the seats up there.
We certainly appreciate you bringing this to us. But also, we want you to know, and it's not just in Precinct 4 there, there's trouble all over the county. We are trying to, we are trying to make progress. We've just, we've just started this in about three, four months into it. We're not going to quit. I can promise you that.
Well, it looks like to me that, I personally don't have anything wrong with, personally with Clint Bane's, but y'all might find somebody that goes out there. Me and those three, uh, those three neighbors, we're customers up here. And all we need was somebody to go out there and tell whichever customer what the law is. That's all you need, is send somebody out there that tends to that, not their own personal agenda.
We agree with you.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stansel.
Thank you, Mark.
Number four, considering possibly approve the distribution of funds not to exceed the $2,970 from the AGCO to the Juvenile Department for participation in the Juvenile Probation Mental Health Grant approved on December the 8th, 2022. The contract period is from September the 1st of '22 to July the 31st of 2023. Barbara, would you like to speak on that at all?
Judge Lee approved our participation in the AGCO grant in our second hour. I mean, for the juvenile probation for Chris Davis, which is that, apart from a financial standpoint. And for some reason, it never came to Commissioners' Court. So now, if I had requested that you approve that, that grant actually ends July 31st. I will tell you that Chris has already done the request to have the funds sent to us, and we received those funds. But this is just an intent for us to go through that process that we really should have done in December, or whenever it was that Judge Lee signed that, actually, we did it, I think, in August, but to make sure that we're just following the clients. There will be no cost to the county. The way that works is, uh, juvenile probation will, will pay for those health evaluation, and then they will apply for reimbursement, reimbursement comes to us, and we will send it to them. So we won't be out of funds.
So we just need a motion so we can approve that up, and the check's already here, and so we can move forward.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion by Commissioner Applewhite to approve that.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor? All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number five, considering possibly approve part-time employees for the clerks, County Clerk's Office, including 29 or less hours per week for 13 weeks at a rate of $14 per hour. That's going to be...
Yes, Judge.
Welcome. You're a little different looking today.
And we have, like I spoke to y'all before, we have had several issues in the past six months, eight months, that we've been having issues prior to being in this, since I've been in office with medical emergencies and staff being out, definitely emergencies. I have planned on asking for this, just to be prepared. And last week, we did have an employee come up with a major medical emergency that will require her to be out of office an extended amount of time. So I do need to hurry to get promoted higher to be able to help in situations that I would feel whenever I can't be able to do this again.
Now, is this for the whole year, or this is going to be just for summer, or do you have a plan on that?
It's going to be up until, I would like to have for an entire year, but this is just until October.
October, until the budget, until you can change your budget up?
Right. But I do need to hire as many as possible to get them trying to be able to fill in where I can be going or go to the physician to do that job. Because that might just going to be more extensive for the person to still be out.
I'll make a motion to, to hire part-time employees for the County Clerk's Office because I think it's really the cheapest thing for the county to do because you don't have to supply the insurance and all that stuff for them. And it's just part-time, and I make the motion to approve that.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve that.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor? All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number six, considering possibly approve retaining a law firm of Allison Bass &amp; McGee LLP regarding to the potential Titus County solid waste ordinance. We've talked about this a couple of times in Commissioners' Court, the Commissioners down at one of our meetings, we've talked about this. Reason that we want to put this in place is because we can't, a big company out of Dallas come here and have a, have a waste. They can just come in, buy the land, and we have no control over it without this in place. It's going to run us about $10,000 through the lawyers to get that done. There's going to be quite a bit of work. They'll come down and set the surveys on all of it and do all those property lines, which Joyce has been trying to help me get. And so we found out there's a, there's an easier, better way to do it. That way, we're covered legally. Also, what this would encompass, if we do get this in place, there wouldn't be any transitional trash either. And some of you may not know what transitional trash is. A company will buy a spot of land, bring it from different counties, different towns, and bring it here and just switch it to different trucks. This will include that and any landfills that we don't know about. Without this in place, they can buy a property anywhere in the county and put in a landfill and us have no control over it. This way, we do have, they'll have to be approved through the county, before the Commissioners' Court, before they can make a move like this. I know it's $10,000, but I really think it protects the citizens of Titus County and keeps us safe from another waste field coming here. We've got plenty of room there with the one that we're working with now to suffice, I think they said 15 to 20 years. But with everything that's happening with Dallas moving things this way, transitional waste and things of that nature, I really think it's important for us to move forward with this and get this as a county policy.
Make the motion we approve.
I got a motion by Commissioner Parchman to approve that, to pay the $10,000 to the Allison firm.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor? All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number seven, considering possibly approve hiring Arnold and Walker, Arnold Walker and Arnold, to perform external audit at the estimated cost of $38,925 for the county and also for $3,500 for our Juvenile Department. From the, from the audits that we've received from them, you can get an audit from different places, but sometimes they're awful hard to follow. I really appreciate the way they presented it and to make it, make it easy to follow along with their audits, and I think we should stick with them.
Make the motion, we keep them.
Got a motion by Commissioner Applewhite to keep Arnold Walker in honor.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Parker. All those in favor? All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number eight, considering possibly give a 30-day notice for the Emergency Management position. We've talked about this several times, talked about with the city as well. Right now, Chief McRae does both. He does the city and the county emergency manager, and the city feels like it, and we feel like it might be best for, for everybody involved to have our own city, our own emergency manager over our, over our emergencies out in the county.
What is, I need, I need the reasoning behind this. I don't, I don't see us needing to myself, but...
You have to have one. Each of the county and the city has to have one.
But I'm saying, I don't, I don't see the need to have two in the county. Or two for our boat, one for the city and one for the county. Well, even the city manager said it'd sound like a conflict of interest to him because we, we contract our fire protection through them, and we also lead over the emergency management. And it's been several of us talking, and they, they said they could see also a conflict of interest. Because they said what they charge us for, for fire protection, and that's a conflict of interest anytime you've got your hand in both cookie jars, you see. That, that would be my reason to tell you.
Like I said, we need to give them 30 days' notice at any point that we're going to do it, so...
Well, I'll make the motion to do it.
Got the motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to give the 30-day notice for our Emergency Manager and Open Management.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor? All those opposed?
No.
Jimmy, only one voting no. Considering possibly approve the quarterly investments reports. Ms. Barbara?
Um, Commissioners, that is a little bit different this time. It looks exactly the same, but because this is like an apple wine, I have both the investment officers, now that prepares that report now, I all of that before we both sign it. There's not any other difference in the layout, it's the standard layout. She's generally how county businesses done it. She's, she's willing to do those meetings, and so this is the first time it's like that. And in the future, she'll be the one who actually sends that to you and answering the questions. Of course, I'm here to do that, but she is the one who prepares that. And we've done the training, and she's set up to say it right there.
So do you have any comments, Mrs. Applewhite, I guess I should say? Do you have any comments on that?
If you would, it's been a lot of money to work with, but...
Barbara's still there for you if you need any questions, I'm sure, and she'll help you right along. But we appreciate y'all, Barbara, in your office as well, both of you ladies. So I need a motion to approve those, the quarterly investment report.
I'll make that motion.
I got Commissioner Parker making that motion, and Commissioner Parchman, seconded, all on the same note there. All those in favor? All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number 10, approve the oral and written reports of the county officials.
Make that motion.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Applewhite to approve those reports.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor? All those opposed? Number 11, considering possibly accept the Treasurer's Report as a matter of the record. I got a motion made by Commissioner Parchman and seconded by Commissioner Parker to accept the Treasurer's Report as a matter of record. All those in favor? All those opposed? Number 12, approve the budget amendments. Ms. Barbara?
Yes, sir. In a free budget amendment, number 25, 26, and 27, the first one is for that $10,970 from AGCO that we just discussed for juvenile probation. I took the liberty of going and preparing that because I felt certain that we were not going to have any funds. Number 26 is for the property insurance. It's $15,899. That's $10,006, but that is for the cost of the historical coverage on the courthouse that we've already discussed. And then the difference there about $500, about $500 of dollars is just due to the increase in property insurance once we got the bills in. They told us it might be 20% statewide and hours, something like that. So we're pleased with that one. And then number 27 is a little longer. This is one, increase to miscellaneous, $1500, an increase in tires for $2,000, and a decrease in road materials, $3,500 for the net with increase in one. There's no change, it's just a line item adjustment. Then we have changes to the general ABN prior year ARCA funds. It's for the trucks, the two trucks for Precinct 2, Precinct 3, and then we also set up a line item for Precincts 1 and 4, should y'all decide to purchase a truck, that money is designated now for that if it wasn't before this. And I do need to remind you that the bid that we have expires August of 15. So if you decide to purchase a truck, you need to be sure that that be a continued purchase order to you, so that we can meet those requirements. The other one is related to seal the ARCA fund, fire ARCA funds. Mr. Applewhite needs to hire a part-time temporary help. It's for salary and Medicare, and that's going to be out of his outlay that he already set aside. So the net impact on this is zero, but it's just changes to various line items.
Okay. Got a motion to approve those budget amendments.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion by Commissioner Parker to approve those budget amendments.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor? All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number 13, sign and pay orders and approve payments.
Make a motion to pay our bills.
Jimmy makes a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor? All those opposed? Nathan, you got here a little late. Are you wanting to speak?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if you'd like to come up, we'll, we'll entertain that at this time.
Thank you, Judge Cooper. Appreciate the opportunity. I apologize for being a little bit late and just wanted to bring to the, to the attention of, of the Commission, a program that hopefully we could discuss and take action on next, in the next few weeks, at the next County Commission meeting. And so what we're hoping to do is set up a meeting with Ms. Barbara and, and anyone on the council who may wish to attend that, or, I'm sorry, Council Commissioners, I'm sorry, or I know the county attorney is, is out of town for a while, but the program is fairly innocuous in the sense that there's not a huge need. It's more of a, I know there's concerns from a financial perspective, so I just wanted to address those with business Barbara at the table, anyone on the council, I'm sorry, the Commission is able to just review the process. But what it is, is it's called Texas PACE Program, P-A-C-E. And so there's, there is a PACE Program in almost every, every state in the Union, but, and Texas is, began around 2013 legislatively. The legislature enabled this, and you can go to their website and learn a little bit more about it. What I thought I'd do is read the letter. I, I'll kind of forward to everyone, just to kind of introduce you to the program. Surrounded communities or counties that have adopted are Hopkins County, Bowie County, Smith County, nearby cities, or like Paris, the city of Paris. And so what it, it's, you know, I'm going to read my document real quick before I continue reading, and then you can ask me a few questions, but I won't take long. So, Dear Judge Cooper and County Commission, the Mount Pleasant Economic Development Corporation advises continued relationship with Titus County to advance economic development initiatives for our community. To that end, and after hearing a presentation from the Texas PACE Program, the Board of Directors for the NPDC voted on 18th, 2023 to send a letter formally requesting Titus County to evaluate and potentially adopt the Texas PACE Program. This program exists in some form in almost every state and has been adopted by many of our surrounding communities. Additionally, and probably most importantly for us, is incoming business local bounty has specifically asked for a citywide or a countywide adoption in order to pursue their refinancing options. After communicating with City Mount Pleasant, NPDC would prefer a broader application and adoption of Texas PACE, which will include this city of Mount Pleasant, to allow more economic development and investment opportunities for both existing enforcing needs across the county, which the County Commission's aware of, and city to rehabilitate aging improvements and encourage private investment. NPDC considers this a timely request. And one more paragraph that I'll read. Texas PACE is a proven financial tool that incentivizes Texas property owners to upgrade facility infrastructure with little to no capital outlay. And approved by state legislation and established by local governments through voluntary adoption, Texas PACE Program enables owners to lower their operating costs and use these savings to pay for eligible water, conservation, energy efficiency, resiliency, and distributed generation projects. Owners gain access to private, affordable, long-term, typically 10 to 20 years financing that is not available through traditional funding avenues. And to kind of give you an idea of how, when I say innocuous, the program is, if it's adopted at a county level, it includes the city of Mount Pleasant, they don't have to even approve it. It's, it's not affecting taxes, it's not affecting revenue. It's, it, all the program does is it gives, it'll operate outside of the county and the city. It'll be a financing institution, and the financing institution, the kind of kicker is that they actually get the power of a governing entity like a city or a county to, to go after our debt for, that's part of their collateral. So, and I don't mean it as collateral, I'm explaining it a little bit incorrectly, but it allows, Mr. Hudson? It allows a financing institution to use the authority of, of a county. So it's a really great program in the sense that it allows, and especially with what's happening with a lot of rehabilitation in downtown buildings, Diamond C is going to be purchasing the, the old First Baptist Church, or you're looking at Talco, or you're looking at buildings around the county that are rehabilitated. It could be, it could include a new roof, it could include windows, and so it's, and HVAC. So a lot of the components within a normal debt service operation or loan that takes a long time to recoup. It can carve those little pieces out and structure the loan and then allow these little pieces to be, to be, to have a much lower interest rate. And so we think it's really interesting for people coming into Mount Pleasant, that people can be rehabbing apartments, could be rehabbing houses, commercial buildings, and drastically reduce their ability to, to borrow. And so, and, and as it comes to local bounty, they're specifically restructuring right now and making that request, and they've been calling me once every about eight to 10 days. They introduced us to this program about two and a half weeks ago, then I was on vacation and everything. But the, they're, they're hoping to kind of, that we can get support from the city, from the, from the county. If not, we would go to the city, I just really think this would be very beneficial to the county in general. So I'll, is there anyone, I'll just ask now, that would want to be on a call with the Texas PACE Program to learn a bit more about it or ask those questions at that time? Or is there a way, a format that the Commission would prefer to hear? Or would you just would like...
It'd probably be easier than an executive session for us. With this being said, you said it don't affect the tax rate or the income of the county or the city, either one at all?
Yes. And, and it'll come, just to give you an idea of how, it's, the way it's set up legislatively, it's kind of for the private sector, but it's, they, it's just kind of using legal loopholes to say, listen, we can, we can use, the county or a city can adopt it, but it's, it happens, the majority of the project happens in a financing institution, not at all inside of government. And the program, it comes in a box, so you'll get fully templatized, everything. I received on Friday from the, from the program director, the public hearing notices, like there, everything will be delivered for you guys, just to put the word Titus County inside of it and sign off on. So it's, it's...
But nothing on evaluations, taxes, or anything? This is just...
It's not like a tax abatement, like if that's what you're referring, like where it would impact in any way, absolutely not. And this is what I mean by like, if you adopt it, it impacts the city, and they would have to adopt it if it was like a tax abatement or something like that, if there was impact on any sort of funds, and it's not. It's just a blanket voluntary program.
And if we do approve this, it's just a blanket for the county, we don't decide who gets this program or who doesn't get that program. It's just a county-wide program that they can use.
Yes, sir. So the, the company A was coming into town, they are approved through the state legislature. There are approved through the state legislature financing institutions, and you can go see the list. I think Frost Bank's on there. There's a few banks that are approved that know this program. And that's what I mean. You'll probably never even know about it.
So, if I ask you...
Yes, ma'am.
So, a couple of questions. You said that we would have to do public hearings and all those kinds of things. So you also said that there is... The commissioners who say approve that, the board that would be creating, have the power of the commissioner? Said with the power of the county government?
No, so let me restate that. Actually, I don't want to restate it. I'd rather have you talk to the program director to explain it a little bit better.
My suggestion, Judge Cooper, with your input, I'll leave the decision makers are there, so I would prefer that we do this at a time where they can hear that. And I'm pressing the button. I don't want to overstep my limits.
Absolutely. However the county would like to do it. I know that we had our first executive session in a very long time, and happy to do that again. We feel very comfortable working in executive sessions. And then we come out, hopefully, and do that.
Would this session be good?
Time for that, or in between? Is there some time in between the next two weeks?
Either way, we won't vote on it in an executive session. The only way we're going to vote on this is on the agenda and go from there, so... I'd say put it on the agenda and bring your presentation there. Instead of waiting it in a closed session, let's just... I mean, I don't see no point in us meeting in an executive session on this, unless y'all do. We'll just put it on the agenda and then...
I'll shoot you this letter, and it has a little information on it. You can go to the website as well and educate yourself in the meantime, but happy to do that. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you for that work. Closing comments? Jeff, did you have any trees or anything down in your part of the county?
I had one call and mine.
So kind of missed everything?
I had one call Saturday evening down.
That's it?
Yes.
Dana, you got quite a bit more rain than everybody else got, I think.
We got about 10 trees Sunday, last Sunday, and then about 15 this past week, all through the week. We've had the whole day out. Friday, we was cleaning up trees, getting them off the road anyway. And I appreciate you bringing, you and Nathan, bringing that to the court on this project. Appreciate it.
Jimmy, can you add anything else you appreciate?
I had one Saturday, had some during the week last week. I don't remember now what day it was, but we had had a few then. But I had one Saturday, and that was, it was just a small deal, so...
Like I said, the commissioners are doing a great job on that. Be patient with us. It is wet this year. We're getting a whole lot more trees down than we normally do, and they're trying to get a lot of the debris off the top of the roads to get bigger vehicles in and out. But it's wet, and we only do so much when it's wet, so please bear with us on that.
Judge, I'd like to say too that we, I know the rideaways are growing up pretty good, and we're going to try to get on them. We've got a road that we've got tore up. We're trying to get it finished. When we get it finished, we're going to jump on rideaways and get them mowed and everything.
Like I said, I think y'all are doing good on it, and it's just wet. And it's hard to mow the rideaways when it's so wet, getting stuff stuck and things of that nature. Also, I want to, we're going to get with Mr. Bane, Mr. Stansel coming. It's not just a Stansel law in your precinct. We're trying to clean everybody's precincts up and make them better for Titus County. And whatever works the best to get that done is, I think, what we're all in agreement is to try to get done and also work with Officer Bane to make it a smooth transition for everyone, so... With that being said, take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Got a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Mitchell. Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor? Commissioner Parker, I'm sorry. It's by Commissioner Parker. All those in favor? All those opposed? Carries unanimously.